I will call to order the special meeting of the Board of Alderman at 7:00 PM. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Bietsu. Alderman McGinnis will lead us in pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Cookson.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Siegel.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Here.
Alderwoman Malizigola.
Present.
Alderman McGinnis.
Here.
Alderman LeBrun.
Here.
Alderman Moriarty.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have eleven members present, three absent.
Also present is Honored Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton. This evening, the only item on the agenda for the special board meeting is the public hearing on Resolution 117-119 relative to a ballot referendum to allow Keno within the city of Nashua. The board, several meetings ago, voted to place the question on the ballot, and that requires a public hearing held prior to the election. Tonight is that public hearing. So if anyone would like to testify in favor of R. 117-119, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and give your testimony. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? If not, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to R. 117-119, please come forward. There being none, I'll ask one more time for testimony in favor of R. 117-119 relative to a ballot referendum to allow Keno within the city of Nashua. And one more time in opposition. There being no testimony, I will call the public hearing closed at 7:04. Is there a motion? Alderman Wiltshire.
Move to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we adjourned at 7:04. I will call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:30. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Bietsu. Alderman O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Cookson.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Siegel.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Here.
Alderwoman Malizigola.
Present.
Alderman McGinnis.
Here.
Alderman LeBrun.
Here.
Alderman Moriarty.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have twelve members present.
Also present is Honored Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to mention a couple of things that are on tonight's agenda. The first being R. 117-133, which is the resolution authorizing that we enter an agreement, a memorandum of understanding, with the Boston Surface Railroad Corporation. The objective here is, in view of the difficulty there has been in establishing a publicly-funded or subsidized service, to enter this agreement with a private corporation to establish rail service between Nashua and Lowell using our relationship, a partnership, with a private party who would run a rail commuter service that would not require a subsidy by the government, by Nashua, or by the state of New Hampshire, would not require assistance with the capital portion, the improvements to the track or the equipment that would be needed. This would be a very significant -- if this can be accomplished, it would be a very significant step forward for Nashua. We have many, many residents who commute through daily, many hours a week, stop and go, grind. We could help take them off the road, make their lives, the quality of life easier for them, and would reduce emissions and traffic on the road generally. Of course, there are many steps to go before we complete this. Mr. Vincent Bono, who is the principal of the Boston Surface Railroad Corporation, came to the Planning and Economic Development Committee last week. I think answered everybody's questions quite effectively. So I hope that the board will endorse the recommendation of the Planning and Economic Development Committee and finally pass this resolution so we can move forward in attempting to develop this plan. Secondly, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, I wanted to mention the riverfront plan, which is also on the agenda, the adoption of the riverfront plan. This has been developed over the course of a year or so with the consultant down in Boston. They've developed some extremely exciting ideas regarding how we can better use the riverfront for recreation for our residents and enhance this very valuable and beautiful natural asset that we have right in Nashua's downtown. Nashua is really unique in having a river like this running right through the community, least unique in New Hampshire. And passing this riverfront plan, adopting an overall strategy to better enhancing the riverfront, will help move our downtown forward and accomplish a lot for the entire community. So I hope that the board will again follow the recommendation of the committee and adopt the plan so that we can begin to take full advantage of the riverfront, which is just a close distance away. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any response to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period.
First reading of Resolution 17-138, recognizing the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign on October 12, 2017.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the second reading of R. 117-138.
Motion is that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of R. 117-138. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 17-138, recognizing the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign on October 12, 2017.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 117-138.
Motion is for final passage of R. 117-138. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 117-138 is adopted. Alderman Dowd and Mayor Donches, would you like to -- and Ms. Tabasco, would you join us?
Yes. With us this evening, Mrs. Tabasco, who is New England Water Environment Association Co-Chair in Public Awareness, and Jerry Ciadelli, Public Education Chair, who works at the wastewater plant. Resolution, recognizing the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign on October 12, 2017, city of Nashua, in the year 2017, whereas the infrastructure that brings water to and from homes and businesses is essential to the quality of life and economic vitality of the city of Nashua, whereas the crisis in Flint, Michigan, shows the severe impacts of what can happen to the health and well-being of a community without access to clean groundwater, and whereas changes in weather patterns are causing drought and flooding in regions throughout the United States, putting pressure on water systems that are ill-equipped and ill-prepared to manage such extreme events, and whereas utilities nationwide are grappling with aging infrastructure and lack reliable revenue and funding to maintain systems, to let alone system, upgrade their systems, whereas one-fifth the United States' economy would grind to a halt without a reliable, clean source of water, and whereas managing water responsibly is critical to the nation's environmental health and to a high quality of life through economic commerce, power generation, and recreation, and whereas investing in our drinking water and wastewater systems will secure a bright and prosperous future for generations to come, and whereas innovation in water conservation and water reuse will drive job growth, economic development, and establish a 21st-century paradigm of water management in the United States, and whereas green stormwater infrastructure will not only ease the burden on our sewers, but will provide a maximum return in benefits to the public, the economy, and the environment. And whereas, for every job created in the water sector, another 3.68 jobs are added to the national economy, and for every dollar spent on infrastructure improvements, the U.S. generates a $6 in returns revenue, whereas different regions face different water challenges, so the solutions to strengthen our drinking water and wastewater systems must be locally driven, but reinvestment in our water must be a national priority. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Alderman of the city of Nashua, that water is essential to the quality of life and economic competitiveness, acknowledges the importance of educating the public about the value of water through the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign being held on October 12, 2017, and further resolve that the city of Nashua is dedicated to investing in water and wastewater infrastructure, and calls on our federal and state planners to bring much-needed funding and innovation to the project and restore our critical water infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Alderman Wiltshire.
I move that the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of September 26, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended.
Motion is that the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of September 26, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and that the reading be suspended. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Communications. Alderman Siegel.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that all communications be read by title only.
Motion is that all communications be read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to communication, retiree drug subsidy, reopening plans, years 2012 and 2013.
Alderman Siegel.
President, I'd like to make a motion, accept, place on file, and authorize the city to enter into the service agreement and business associate agreement with Part D. Advisors Incorporated.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and authorize the city to enter into service agreement and business associate agreement with Part D. Advisors Incorporated. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy, President, Board of Alderman, relative to Aldematic member, Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move to accept, place on file, and concur with the appointment of Alderman June M. Karen to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and concur with the appointment of Alderman June M. Karen to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy, President, Board of Alderman, relative to appointments to the Nashua Rail Transit Committee.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to accept, place on file, and concur with the appointment of Alderman McCarthy and Alderman O'Brien to the Nashua Rail Transit Committee.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and concur with the appointment of Alderman McCarthy and Alderman O'Brien to the Nashua Rail Transit Committee. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Alderman Moriarty.
I move that the rules be suspended so far as to allow the introduction of a communication received after the agenda was prepared.
Motion is that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the introduction of a communication received after the agenda was prepared. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Communication from Alderman at Large Daniel T. Moriarty, relative to pro and con information relative to the ballot question on the Performing Arts Center.
Alderman Moriarty.
I move that the communication titled pro and con informationary ballot question performing arts center be accepted and placed on file.
Motion is to accept and place on file. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Petitions?
There are none.
Alderman Moriarty.
I was hoping I'd get a chance to speak on that. When would be the proper time to do that?
On what?
The communication.
The communication has been accepted by the board.
Okay.
If you wish to speak, probably under remarks by members of the board at the end would be appropriate. Did you raise your hand when I asked for discussion?
I did, yes. I apologize if it wasn't a hi.
I'll allow some discussion, but not an entire reading of it, because we did vote to read communications by title only.
I appreciate that. I'll be quick. So I'm, the more I thought about this, I'm inclined to do nothing and let the voters of Nashua make up their minds on their own without the interference of the Board of Alderman. But it is worth just, I want to mention a couple things, and I'll be quick. So I did find that there is indeed, what we have is we have two laws that seem to be inconsistent with each other. We have a state law and we have a city law. State law says that city staff are not supposed to do anything ever that's effective ballot question. And then we have a city law that says that the city staff is supposed to provide pro and con information about a ballot question. The state law, RSA 65944-A, says that no public employee, while in the performance of their duties, shall electioneer, and such a thing is a misdemeanor. So I personally don't want to encourage any city staff, the Director Cummings or the city clerk, to do anything that might be in violation of the electioneering statute to put them at risk of a misdemeanor. Meanwhile, we do have a city law that says whenever a measure is submitted to vote by the qualified voters of the city of Nashua, that, you know, the city charter and corporation counsel shall prepare pro and con arguments for this, assuming that that submission is pursuant to Sections 98 through 108 of the city charter. So I went back and I read the motion when that was made to put the performing arts center on the ballot as a question, and there was no mention of what section of the charter was used. I wouldn't expect them to. So I have a question to Alderman Clemmons, since he made the motion, I'm not picking on you, but you made the motion, so I'll ask you the question. When you made the motion to create the ballot question, what charter section were you going to use? What charter section were you using to give the Board of Alderman the authority to put that question on the ballot?
I'm going to pose the question to Corporation Counsel, who would be in a better position to know what our rights are to put questions on the ballot.
Well, I don't pretend to know what Alderman Clemmons was thinking in his own mind as to whether any particular authorizing legislation was impacted. I would say that if a measure was going to be referred to the voters pursuant to the charter provisions, really 102, but 98 all the way through 108, the proper way to do that would have been to amend the introductory language as the charter provides to say, be it resolved by the city of Nashua upon a vote referred to them by the Board of Alderman of the city of Nashua, words to that effect are mandated if you're going to have a binding resolution pursuant to those sections. I had particularly asked at that meeting if Alderman Clemmons was thinking of a non-binding resolution. His comment to me was yes, that was what he was envisioning. And those provisions, 98 through 108, themselves envision a measure that takes effect if there's an affirmative vote of the qualified voters. Very nature of a non-binding referendum is that it's advisory to the board, and the underlying action does not take effect, but merely provides information to the board. So a combination of all of those things leads me to believe that we're not talking about something that's pursuant to 98 through 108, where the charter provision, and there's also an ordinance provision at Section 23-15, which talks about information for voters in the form of pro and con statements. That being the case, I interpret this to just be a method by which the Board of Alderman is ordering the prudential affairs of the city, which it has the right to do pursuant to RSA 4717. And by prudential affairs, we're talking about the finances chiefly of the city, other matters as well, but certainly finances are included. And the underlying measure here is to have a referendum to advise the Board of Alderman on a matter that's pertaining to the prudential affairs of the city. So that's where I see the authority for it.
Alderman Moriarty.
Very good answer. Thank you, Attorney Bolton.
You're welcome.
So RSA 4717 appears to be the statute which allows us to put a non-binding question on the ballot, and as such doesn't fall under NRO 2315, and we're not required to provide pro and con information.
That's been our analysis in the legal department.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we had the discussion, we had a chance to think in advance of tonight's Board of Alderman meeting, and have good data. So with that, I'll just leave it and say, I just want, again, city staff to just be mindful of RSA 65944, which says, don't do anything that might be construed as electioneering because it's a misdemeanor. Thank you.
Attorney Bolton, is it your opinion that the question that's being asked falls under the auspices of that RSA?
Well, if we're not going to provide it, I don't have to worry about committing a misdemeanor, so I'm fine with the way we're leaving it.
Do you believe it would be a misdemeanor if pros and cons were provided on a non-binding question, I guess is?
I believe that if one had the ability to write a pro statement and a con statement that satisfied 100% of the people on both sides of the issue, that one would be very safe from being accused of violating that statute. However, human nature being what it is, my prediction would be that someone would not be happy and would think the pro statement was too pro, or the con statement was too weak, or vice versa, and the possibility of having that statute waved around would be great. Whether a prosecutor would bring a case, whether a jury would convict, that's another question.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes, through you to Attorney Bolton, I have had residents of the city, constituents of mine, and constituents of other Ward Aldermen, ask me where they can find information regarding the Performing Arts Center study, the minutes from the meetings, and the minutes from the special meeting that the Board of Alderman had regarding Keno. At last week's PEDC meeting, I suggested to Director Cummings that those at least be posted on the homepage, because many people have difficulty navigating our website and don't know where to find this information. Would you view posting the links to that information, just public record information that is out there, and making it more accessible to our residents and our voters electioneering?
No.
Thank you.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Carl Andre, 10 Clydesdale Circle, Nashua, to the Business Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire September 13, 2019. I have appointed Beth Coram Toddin, 14 Alice Drive, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2018. I have this day appointed Patricia Casey, 15 Pine Hill Avenue, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2019. I have this day appointed Jason Tellereski, 5 Shakespeare Road, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2019. I have this day appointed Michael Affleberg, 7 Edson Street, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2020. I have this day appointed Maggie Harper, of 3 Taft Street, Nashua, to the Planning Board as an alternate for a term to expire March 31, 2020, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Michael Joseph, 184 Main Street, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2018. And I have this day appointed Jennifer Bishop Saucier, 359B Main Street, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants for a term to expire October 1, 2020, and respectfully request these appointments be confirmed.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to accept the appointments by the President of the Board of Alderman as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to accept the appointments by the President of the Board as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Reports of committees? If there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Human Affairs Committee of October 4, 2017, accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Committee on Infrastructure of September 27, 2017, accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee of October 3, 2017, accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons?
There are none.
Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Third reading of Resolution 17-129, for the city to research the feasibility of purchasing the former Daniel Webster College property located at 20 University Drive.
Alderman Dowd, would you mind picking up the motion that's on Alderman Cookson's desk? Alderman Shuneman.
I just wanted to point out, for Alderman Cookson's absence, he did text me saying he's running late, he'll be here as soon as he can, but he is on his way.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, motion for indefinite postponement of R. 17-129.
Motion is for indefinite postponement of R. 17-129. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 17-138, which is the resolution authorizing that we enter Second reading of Resolution 17-132, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $78,273 from the Department of Homeland Security into fire grant activity FY 2016, assistance to firefighters' grant.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 17-132.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17-132. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 17-132 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-133, authorizing the city to enter into memorandum of understanding with the Boston Surface Railroad Company, Inc.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 17-133.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17-133. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 17-135, relative to the approval of the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan adopted by the City Planning Board.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes, I would move for final passage of R. 17-135.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17-135. Discussion? Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes, I just want to point out that Director Marchant gave everyone who was at P E D C a copy of this manual with the information around the proposal. If you did not receive one in your mailbox, please let her know she has it available for you. And as you heard that evening, this is looking at the riverfront development from the Milliard Technology Park to the rail bridge out near BAE, to the east side of the library. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was at that P E D C meeting, and I thought it was a great presentation. I think it's a wonderful plan. For anyone who's watching at home and wondering about cost, there certainly will be a cost as this plan is developed, and adopting the plan doesn't obligate us to that cost. It's just a plan to look to the future, to see what we can do to improve the waterfront access and the aesthetic value of the waterfront to the city, and we'll take a look at the various phases and expenditures as time moves on.
Further discussion? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we also discussed at that meeting, even though I wasn't a member, that in, in putting that forward, it would be a phased approach, no matter what we did, so it would not all be done at one time.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 17-135 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
There are none.
Unfinished, or new business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution 17-139, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a lease agreement with Absolute Broadcasting LLC for a portion of 1 Pine Street Extension.
Any additional sponsors? R. 17-139 will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-140, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $32,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation into public health and community services grant activity FY 2018, NHCF, substance abuse prevention.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Wiltshire, and Alderman O'Brien. And R. 17-140 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances?
There are none.
Period for general public comment? No one has signed up. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen? Start over here. Anybody? Alderman Karen.
Thank you. I'd like to extend my condolences to Jim Sanderson's family, who passed away in Florida over the weekend. Jim Sanderson was a longtime coach and friend to the Parks and Recreation Department. He worked very hard to teach kids baseball. He was a coach for over 40 years. He worked alongside the other Mr. Baseball, which is Ray Open. I considered Jim a friend when I needed help for our basketball program for our senior boys. He stepped in and continued to coach in that program for another 15 years. So the community has lost a wonderful citizen and person who is involved with the youth of Nashua, and my heart goes out to Jim's family, Gail, and their daughters. Thank you.
Any other remarks? Committee announcements? Alderman Clemmons.
Personnel and Democratic Affairs next Monday at 7:00 here in the chamber.
Alderman Sherman.
Infrastructure tomorrow night, October 11, here in the Aldermanic chamber, 7:00 PM.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes, P E D C next Tuesday here in the chamber at 7:00 PM.
Any other announcements? Is there a motion? Alderman Wiltshire.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we're adjourned at 8:02.